All right, 6 o'clock we will call the committee of the whole meeting to order. If the clerk would please call the roll.
Marovka, here.
Here.
March.
Here.
Parker.
Yeah.
Ham.
Here.
Bowden.
Here.
Here.
I did nothing.
Approve minutes of the 2/25/19 committee of the whole meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Not a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Trustee Jones, second by Trustee March.
Jones?
Yep.
March?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Marovka? Present.
Public comment. If you were here to comment, now is a good time.
Good. I'm waiting for something?
No, go ahead. I'm just making sure the cameras.
Just ask if the village board has any plans to address the problem of that huge depression in front of the fire station on Gillette Road. It's been there for six years and right after they re横了.
Right, and that's... And that's, we actually talked about that at the last meeting, John. That's a county road, or that's a county road. That's a Gillette Road in front of the fire station's a county road. We've been in touch with the county. I know the county and the fire district have gone back and forth on a couple of different things. And I, after the last meeting, Bob was gonna try to get ahold of the county again, and I haven't heard anything back from him yet. Bob Hinke, the public works director. So, we're in touch with the county, but it's not our road, it's a county road.
Something needs to be done.
I understand what you're saying.
We wanted to start the action and get it done, but it's out of hand. Like I said, it's only been six years.
I know, and that's been, you know, back and forth, but like I said, between the county and I know the fire district had a conversation as to who's responsible for whatever cause it...
Whoever does the thing has to be responsible.
Right.
They should be held responsible. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item five, 2019-2020 proposed working village budget review.
So you got the booklet in front of you for the working budget. Any questions, or do you just wanna do a quick review of each of the departments? They worked really hard in trying to do some customer, because AOC would attest in arrears in the red quite a bit of almost a million at the first pass that we did, so that has been decreased quite a bit. Administration, general fund only went up 2% from last year's budget. Police worked really hard, and their budget decreased by 5% from last year proposed. I skipped administration, sorry, that's up by 6%. Buildings stayed the same and had 0% increase. Streets and alleys only increased by 4% after they did some extensive reviews to that. Zero in the ESTA. And communications did increase quite a bit because of a, it just, just services increases in that area, and that's the reason for that increase. Nothing we can really do about that one. Economic development was increased for the activity that's occurring in the community by 18%. Garbage is a pass-through, and that's just got a scheduled increase in the contract.
The street program that we did in 2013, 14, the debt retirement, is this the last year for that, except for Marcy said, do you guys remember?
The payoff?
Well, the capital outlay, if you look on page 21, the debt retirement for the street program, I know we had borrowed, I think we had borrowed money, I think it was for five years.
Yeah.
Right?
I believe so.
So is this the last payment?
Yes.
While we're on that page, didn't we buy the public works building?
That is actually in the, it'll be in the next budget year, so it'll be in the next...
Well, that's what that big number is.
Right.
Right. But there's also $11,000 of interest charged too, which I didn't understand. They own the building while we were...
We don't own it yet.
We don't own it yet?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Correct.
We will own it.
We will.
In the meantime, we still have it. Okay.
Correct. That's coming out of the next budget year.
Okay. And so the sweeper, the $40,000, is that, is that like a lease on a new sweeper? Or, I know originally she had $300 to buy one, right?
Yeah, so that's if you decide whether you want a lease sweeper, whether you wanna do a payment plan on a new one, or whether you want to, you know, have, just have options there for, you know, how you want to go forward. I believe you, you know, based on the discussions that we had at public works committee, that you like the policy of having the streets, you know, swept and cleaned. So we just kind of left this amount in there so that, you know, we'd have options to accommodate that policy. How we would do them the most cost-effective basis, we felt like this number could address, again, whether, whether the most cost-effective way would be to, you know, contract it out, or lease the equipment, or actually purchase the equipment and then make payments. So that would be a good number to address that.
So the communications, the 20% increase in that, is this mainly because we have to pay more to the...
Right, with the consolidation, you know, we are with Laraway, Lincoln Way, Laraway, it's Laraway. I always get Lincoln Way and Laraway confused. So they have, they have had a rate increase, you know, since the formation of the G31, Laraway, whatever they call it now. So we're, that's where we're at, and that's what we have the budget for. And Chief and I and Amy were talking about that just before the meeting, and that's something you will continue to monitor. You know, Chief attends a lot of the executive board meetings of that, and we'll try to keep a finger on that pulse, but hopefully it'll, it'll level out now. You know, they're kind of getting their feet on the ground. It's a pretty new organization, and they were working off some numbers, you know, when they formed originally, and I think they've incurred some additional costs that they didn't account for.
How long has that been since you've been dispatched out of Laraway?
We, this will be year two, beginning of year two. We started in December of last year, when the dispatch service started over there.
2017.
About that?
2017.
December of...
2017. We just had 18.
It just was in the last year. It was built, and this has been year one, so December would have been year one.
Okay.
Now we're in...
Going into year two.
Yeah, we're in year 1.5, close to. Because now they're getting ready to work on their third year budget.
And again, this was a consolidation that was, you know, mandated by the state, so...
Is that working out pretty well, as far as dispatching goes?
Dispatching part, there's some, you know, there's some growing pains and the other... Unfortunately, what happened, that, you know, some of you may remember or not, the director that they hired and was running everything passed away, right in the midst of all this operations, going up and getting ready to have the doors open and functioning, that just, actually, we took about several steps backwards. Now they've got a new director in there, and they're trying to get things back to where they wanted to be when they opened up. You know, they had things they knew they needed to do with the size of that dispatch center for police and fire, but with no director, everything kind of got stalled. And now they have a new director, and they're trying to get things where they want it to be, and some agencies don't have the patience to wait and understand, it's just, you know, it's a dispatch center, they answer all the phone lines for everybody, non-emergency and emergency. That is a lot of phone calls. Everybody calling about every dog, every crime, everything they wanna know. And so, can't imagine the number of phone calls they answer. So they're, they're working on getting better response to the agencies that are using them. Some agencies are a little less patient than I am.
Do you know how many agencies are involved?
Oh, 31?
31, yeah. Police and fire. It's a combo, police and fire.
Amy, getting back to the budget on page 33, the administrative department. So phone system, copier, computer equipment, are these things that definitely need to be replaced, or they just put those in there in case the printer breaks, or, I mean, the copier breaks, or, I mean, do you have plans for phone system upgrade, or...
Well, my understanding is that the phone system is pretty old, and, I mean, could we make it this year without a new one? Maybe, probably could. So it's not definite that we would spend this, and I think like Marcy's memo said, that we typically come in, well, I think every year have come in under budget, and we don't always necessarily spend all this, and we don't plan to. It's, a lot of it is just in case it, the phones just completely just die, or the panel blows up downstairs, that would be where we'd come in and use this, but the phone system is pretty old.
Yeah, it is.
Would I love to replace it if, you know, but, I mean, it's not something that's on my radar for, for next week or next month.
Are you looking to go with the IP phones?
That would probably be...
Because I had the place wired for that when they pulled the wires for this last system, so the wires are already done.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna do it, we, you know, we need to do it to the current technology level, so that would be good, and that was good forethought, and if, you know, you look at, you know, we don't have any money in here for like a re, any remodel in here. We may have money for looking at a architectural drawing that would inform us of the cost of doing a remodel in the administrative section, you know, then we would be able to look at, okay, well, here we have the line item for the, for the phone portion of it, but we don't anticipate doing that as a high priority. Copier, that might be another story, or a printer, that might be another story.
So Chief, as long as you're here.
Yes, sir.
So their capital improvement fund, you went from zero, you didn't have to spend anything last year, to $97,000 this year. I mean, does any of that stuff, I mean, does it all need to be done, or is it just kind of stuff breaks, we gotta have the money there? Is that...
Cautionary, yeah. A large percentage of it is exactly what you said, Mr. March, is it's the what-ifs. If things break, we have the funds to, in capital outlay, to handle it, but we don't anticipate spending that much, and that's why, you know, we have to build those in. If anything breaks, and we have the phone system in there, and the furnace issues in there, big i, money items break, we don't have the money built in, but these are line items that we normally, unless things go to bad, but we've already, are looking at our computers, and if they don't, we don't leave our cars unlocked, and they don't get stolen. That, the one thing that we have to do on that police department, I have to upgrade the fingerprint equipment because the support for it is beyond the timeframe. They have a seven-year window, but we've had that equipment that long, so that, that's a must. The other, the new squad interior, the car's being built as we speak, but because we haven't got it back, we had the car, that was last year's budget, and the interior was in last year's budget, but we had to roll over because the car is being finished. Radio replacements, I, all three things running, we're fine. We put in those remodels, the range or facility, the phone system, these are just, if the world ends and things break, we have to have the money allocated, or I can't get it. And because they're large items, they have to be over $2,000 in minimum to be in this part of the budget. We've never extended our capital outlay budget. If you had the numbers from last year, we didn't, we never come close to spending the total of that amount of money.
All of our cars in good shape?
Yeah, when we get the new ones, yeah, we'll be, we'll be fine. It's being rebuilt, I'm waiting for one part.
Is he gonna be an SUV, or...
It's another Ford SUV, yeah.
Amy, in your prior experiences, having these budget versus actuals of 20% to 25% under, is that kind of normal in your prior experience?
Under?
Yeah, so like last year, we were budgeted for 4.1 million, you know, it's gonna be quite a bit under that, 3.3, you know, this year we're looking at 4.1, we're gonna be quite a bit under that. I mean, hopefully, are these normal things you've seen in your past experience?
I...
Are we building in too much fluff? It's just a simple way of putting it.
No.
No.
I don't think so. Not in my experience.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I, my general experience, and the, I call it a fun balance, I even asked Marcy, I look at a fun balance of 30%.
30%, so okay. And I'm seeing like 20 to 25, so we're probably more conservative.
Yeah.
Okay.
But nothing's really normal, it's whatever, you know, you find normal.
It just seems like a big balance.
Yeah.
Any other questions, discussion?
Well, I think we gotta talk about the police pension fund. So, Amy, from your email, I don't know if that went out to everybody or just the AOC committee.
I think, I think it was just AOC, if I just replied to all.
Yeah. I wanna just review what, what you told us about, what the actuary said we should be putting in and what we are putting in.
Okay.
And why we're not fully funding it.
Okay. So the, and Chief's here too, and he has more experience with the actuary, but the actuarial just gives us a one, an annual number for what we should be, for actuarial numbers, they only run them once a year, so you go to your tab in the, in the booklet on, on the police pension, the total revenue number is what we put in annually, is our contribution to the police pension fund, which would be that $286,463 number. And the actuarial number for the once-a-year number that they give us, based on a bunch of different variables, you know, and it, so it's kind of a guesstimate, which you don't have in this booklet, it's just, it's a, it's a number that, that Marcy's got. That number that, that they're saying that we should contribute on an annual basis there is $464,000. So that would leave that shortfall of about $177,551 for that annual contribution in the police pension fund.
So of our contribution, I mean, we're not, we're not really putting anything extra in, so the employee payroll, that's their portion. The property tax, I assume, is just based on...
The lobby.
The lobby, right? So that's, it doesn't go up or down. And then employer payroll, is that just matching what we, what the employee puts in, or is that our portion? Is that what's variable, that $96,833, or, you know what I'm saying? So if we were to say we wanna put another $150,000 in, would that go under the employee payroll, employer payroll column there?
I believe so, yeah.
I guess it doesn't really matter where it goes.
Right.
I guess the board, I just want the board to be aware that, again, we're gonna be underfunding this by a substantial amount, that what the actuarial number is. And the actuary number is, says, if you put this money in, you'll be on track to fully funding your pension amount. But they're assuming that we're gonna get 7% or 8% return on our money, which we know we're not, so, but by not fully funding it, you know, we know that, you know, this year it's $5 million in the hole, next year it's gonna be $6 million in the hole, and so on and so on, so, you know. I guess the board, I just think we need to have a discussion about this, I think it needs to be more in the public that this is an issue, and, you know, we're gonna have to make some tough decisions down the road, whether, because someday it's gonna, you know, it's gonna come due, and we may not be on the board, but, you know, it's still a problem for the village and the whole, so...
Chief, you had some... Before the board meeting, Marcy and Amy and I were talking, and the pension board has a new actuary that will be getting our scenario as we speak. He'll start on his next report, which starts in April, and for our annual report, so he'll start calculating these issues, and one thing that, some of the questions they have is, if, I think from the comments from AOC meeting, those scenarios you may have talked about, so we're gonna bring those scenarios to his attention. The unfortunate thing, we won't have the answers by your next meeting, first part of April. I just can't, I won't have him done that. But as soon as Marcy finishes her questions, she wants to present to him scenarios to see what that total dollar amount for the employee payroll would be reduced, or what that would be if AOC's recommendations of certain funds being added, would, how that would apply. So that will be worked up, and as soon as Marcy gives me her questions, we'll send it right to him and see what he's working on. So right now, probably, Mr. March, is the budget is what it is, but I think in the next, this coming year, with the board and what you guys decide to do, it can be a different path by the time you sit down with budget, which won't be far along. I mean, before you know it, it'll be that time of year again. And we'll have a better, unfortunately, you know how budgets are, you get them done, and before you know it, you're, we're working on the next years, because six months turns in quickly, so, and also by that time, we will have, we have to file our annual pension report in the next six months, before the first part of September, so we'll have all those numbers, and before that time, we'll have the actuarial numbers, but we'll also have the scenarios the part of your AOC was asking about.
I mean, the question came up at the AOC meeting is, you know, when we ask, well, why aren't we fully funding it, and it's just, well, we don't have the money to do that, but there is money in the budget, you know, other, I mean, I guess it's gotta get to a point where we have to start making some hard decisions, you know, are we gonna have to, you know, not do everything we wanna do in the budget? Are we gonna have to lay people off? You know, I, it's just, you know, at what point do we address this issue? Or we just keep going along and saying, well, it's not our problem, you know? You know, I'll be off the board in 15 years, or five years, or whatever, and then they can deal with it. You know, I, I don't know. I know a lot of people think that the state, you know, is gonna bail us out, or somebody's gonna bail us out, but I don't know.
Well, I would say this with the, as soon as I have some information from the actuary, either we can do a discussion online with the AOC committee, with you guys, we can get him on the phone, or we can get him here in person to meet, because he's, he's from the, just from the north side, so we can get him here, so you can ask questions firsthand, based on what numbers he's projecting for next year. Okay.
No, and I, I agree with you totally, you know, Dr. March, that this needs to stay in the forefront of discussion and actively be worked on. We're not gonna solve it overnight, but I think we need to do some long-range planning on it.
I just, you know, I think we've just put our head in the sand for too long, and, you know, I think that we're gonna have to start making some painful decisions on, you know, on what we're gonna do. I don't know. That's just me, I don't know, I just, I don't like having that unfunded liability out there. On the other hand, I don't wanna, you know, put all the aqua money into that either. I mean, I don't, I don't think that's a great idea either.
And I think we're working, right now, we're working towards creating some economic development, you know, which I'm hoping, you know, that's gonna help down the road. It's not gonna solve the problem overnight, but it's movement forward that we haven't had in the last 10 years.
Right.
So I, and I hope to see continued movement, you know, we're gonna continue to actively seek, you know, economic development, so, you know, in the long run, I think that's one thing we can look forward to, but I do agree with you that we can't ignore it as it is, and anything that we can do to chip away at it, we need to do.
Is that the timeline, then, 10 years of, like, precedent of underfunding it, basically? Going back 10 years?
Well, 10, I mean, this fund is only, what, 13 years old?
It's only 10 years old, it's a 40-year lifespan, that's what they base everything on.
So it's real falling quickly.
The 40-year, we're gonna be at 40 years with the fund.
Right. So compared to a lot of the funds around us, it's still a young fund.
Right.
But, you know, we can't just continue to say that, we gotta...
Right.
We gotta start, keep working at it.
I mean, I would just hope that any economic development that we get, you know, any of the funds, that we don't just, I think we need to address this, you know, as part of that, that I, I don't think, we shouldn't have the attitude, oh, we're gonna be getting a million...
No, absolutely not.
...in a year at this truck stop, so let's hire some more people, or let's, you know, let's, you know, put in a playground, or something like that, you know what I'm saying?
I totally... And I don't think, I don't think this board has done anything like that, and I don't foresee this board doing anything like that in the future. don't foresee this board doing anything like that in the future.
Yeah, well, I, we haven't had the money to...
Right.
...really blow, but, yeah, so, anyway. Those are just my thoughts.
And Chief, you're saying, basically, for, to not show up this, I mean, show up, an act of, you know, due diligence to show up that $177, $7,000 shortfall, I mean, when there's other padding within the entire budget, you don't think we should take care of that in this budget this year?
I think you've, you gentlemen and ladies have definitely paid closer attention to the budget. And with that, I would say that a year really isn't going to hurt you in this retrospect, because right now, you're at the timeline of getting the budget passed. Because that's where you're at. I mean, you're, you're a few days away, and things have to be on file, part one. Part two, I think the more education we can bring to you with the actuarial and the cost of, and hearing it firsthand, we can get you updated on that whole pension fund, not only with the police pension, but all your pensions. It gets you updated on all that, so, because those are big, those are big line items. You know, so I would just say that...
Table it for a year.
I would say...
No, we're not going to, it's not necessarily tabled.
Get more information.
I want, and I, when I, I like, I like seeing administrative oversight active, and I want to continue them to be active, as I have encouraged and continually encouraged all of the committees to be active. That's what, you know, that's the working parts of this board. And if the committees aren't active, then the trustees come into these meetings, you know, twice a month, and we have discussions. But by making those committees active, we can have a lot more discussions and bring a lot more information to the table at these board meetings. So that's your guys' responsibility, and ladies'. I mean, you guys are welcome, you know, committee chairman are welcome to call a committee meeting anytime they want to. I encourage it. I've encouraged it for the last four years, so I will do that again.
Well, I'd say, I think communication with you as board members to all the parties involved, that way, next year's budget preparation and everything won't be at this, I don't want to say last minute, but sometimes it always gets to the last time of that.
And I think, as I was saying to Amy before the meeting, I think us being a month earlier than a lot of people, you know, with the April 1st budget start, for some reason, that January to April just flies. You know, it really, really does. And next year, just even on the whole budget thing, we got to figure out a little better timeline if we can get it started a little bit earlier. But I know a lot of the information that we need to create that budget isn't available until we get closer to that deadline, so.
I think, you know, I think what helps us is, if we consider, and I hate to say December, but if we can start the really beginning of December, because we know the last, later part of December is die time.
Right.
Because you have the holidays. But the first part of December, if we can start getting some, or the department heads can start crunching their numbers and projections, so they can be out, because if you get it out a lot sooner, then everybody can then have meetings prior to going out with your committees to see what the review is. So when you see it, it isn't sticker shock. And so you're, you're brought into each portion of the development of the budgets by the office hold, the department heads, and also where we're at with all the funding, so.
I think that's a great idea. I mean, having a more active role with the department heads, you know, maybe reviewing the budget halfway through the year, and then talking about goals for the coming budget would be a good fact.
I would say...
I think the six-month review is an excellent idea.
I mean, first I heard of a streets review, it was just about two, three weeks, four weeks ago, and that's a big investment to just hear about in a short amount of time.
Well, I, you know, like you said, I, it's easy to see based on quarters where we're at, how much money's been incurred by all the line items, because we got enough line items in our budget. And you also see where your, your revenues are at, because what you project and what you get is that issue. So if this board and the committees at least want to review that in a quarterly session...
Hey, I think an AOC quarterly review is a really good idea.
...the budget numbers to see where they're at, and then we're not all trying to, I think you're, I think this board's getting a better understanding of the budget in the last few, in your 10 years, and it's not, it's not an easy budget to understand, because it gets back and forth, and, you know, like I said, the capital outlays is the one that looks big if you have everything go bad. But if you don't have it go, then they go bad, then you don't have any money to fix it. So that's kind of the cushion that we talked about. Taking away the cushion may not be the best idea, because if it, if it's going to break, it will. When you least expect it, then we're coming in and trying to appropriate money after the budget's created. That's a tough cause, you know, for the, for the, you as a board, to try to appropriate money that you didn't appropriate. So I would say, like you, board members are planning on doing, review the budgets, see where the revenues are, have your meetings with the independent board, and the AOC will sit down and talk, and I'll keep you up to date, because you guys answer emails. Only one member here gets hard copies, but anyway. So it's easy to pass on some information as it comes in. So as soon as I get your questions that you presented, your scenarios, they'll go to the actuarial, and I'll get his preliminary, what he's looking at before he finishes his report, because he's, and so, and as soon as I get that, you, ladies and gentlemen, will see that.
Sure, sounds good.
So Amy, as other boards that I've been on nonprofits and stuff, when we have our board meetings, you know, there's a presentation of, you know, a treasurer's report that has, you know, here's what we budgeted for the year, here's what we've spent already, and, you know, here's what we're projecting, you know, at the end of the year, or, you know what I'm saying? But I don't, we don't see that here.
So you're talking about, like, in three months, you see how much we've spent on each line?
Yeah.
And what's left in each line?
Yeah, I mean, is that something that's, are we just doing this still by hand? Or is that, are we doing it on a computer that that could just easily, easily be generated? Have you seen that in other municipalities that you've worked at? I mean, is there some way you can work with Marcie to get us something like that?
Yeah.
There is a, there is a report that they have that has every month of what is, what's been spent, what's been budgeted, projections, and balances remaining, and percentages of balances remaining. And Marcie has that, we'll just have to ever get that to you. She usually takes, usually takes about a week or so of the passing month, because she has to get the bank statement.
Sure.
That's what she waits for.
But I mean, even, like I said, just even once a quarter would be nice to see, you know...
Well, and I think that kind of feeds into that quarterly AOC. I would really like to see that quarterly AOC review, and then, you know, AOC can bring it back to the board. I mean, I think that's a really good, you know, function.
So Amy, maybe you could talk to Marcie and see what, you know, if we were going to have a quarterly meeting, what would be the best timelines, you know, when she would, like, close out a quarter, how, you know, how much time would she need to come up with a report for that?
You may see that she'll possibly get it to you before each quarter, because I know she can create it monthly, because we used to, you know, other people, you know, used to get it monthly, and that's how I could tell where my budget is, because I could divide everything by 12, and see if I'm looking good or in the hole, and I'd always tried to project to be in the black. And if I was looking at something, I'd say, well, number one, did I get line item correctly? Did I label it right for the budget? And I found that sometimes I get carried away, but that's how we would get that. And so Marcie, at times, like I said, is waiting for the bank statement, so she can finalize that. So, you know, I think if Amy talks to her, you probably will see that monthly, then the board, AOC can look at it quarterly also to see what those, how they build up, because I used to have them every month in my budget file, so I have 12 of them for the year.
Very good. Anything else? Any other questions, discussion? Okay, thanks, Chief. Craig, did you have something for the...
Good evening.
Good evening.
Want to give you an update on various topics. So this was our pipeline project, so we did get all of our easements to the pipeline project, so everything's in hand now to construct on site, which is a big, a big relief. And I wanted, that's our appreciation of all the property, always on the, I guess, see the south side of the Beecher Blacktop. Do you call it Beecher Blacktop here?
Yeah, Peatown Beecher Road. We call it, commonly known as Beecher Blacktop.
All right, I want to make sure it wasn't. But we got all that, that's really good news, and we got the last piece of easements on Friday, and that was challenging, it was like 13 people involved in the parcels, so it was quite challenging, but we finally got it, that's good news. I told this afternoon that Robinson is finishing up the final aspects of the design, and that they will be out to permit by Monday of next week, and as I said before in the last meeting, we'll bid at the same time. So we'll be out for bidding, contract documents will be out, or bid documents will be out with contractors on Monday, and IEPA will have our permit next Monday, is what I'm being told. So that's good, that's a little bit ahead of what I told you last month, but we'll take that every month we can.
Yep.
So if that all works out, a little conservative schedule, it takes 45 days for IEPA to review. We'll see how busy they are, but we're expecting a late May, maybe early June, construction start. So that's good. If we keep on that track, then we'll be getting a softened and filtered water even sooner, as I said last time. Last meeting, trustee Jones, you asked me about whether or not our interconnect on Corning would impact the villagers' project to redo Corning. And I promised we'd get together with Robinson to talk about that. So the mayor was good about helping us together, and Amy's been great working with us to coordinate some of these discussions. And we did meet with Robinson, and Robinson indicated that you're going to be going from Ratchee all the way to Route 50 with the new, new road work. So first, quite a curious answer is that the interconnect will not affect the road contract at all, because it's going to come in and tie in on Corning east of Route 50. But throughout that discussion, we did discover that, you know, it was desirable from Aqua and the village to do a construction project, replace the water main under Corning if you're going to redo the road. And that's something we'd like to coordinate with the village. The good part is, is that Robinson had started the construction drawings prior to Aqua taking ownership. However, it only covered a couple block section, and I think both the village and Aqua would like to replace the entire main all the way from Ratchee to Route 50 when we do it. So we're working closely with Amy on the timing of that, trying to sync up. So we have to complete the design, we'll have to engage Robinson to complete the design, which will take a little bit of time. Then there's a piece that goes under the Canadian National Railroad, that will take some time to get a permit for that. So we're working, trying to work closely with Amy and the Robinson team with IDOT to see if we can manipulate the schedule a little bit, so we can do both. I think that'd be really great, because we could, we'd love to be able to put the water main in, and have IDOT and the road improvement projects happen afterward, and that's never good when it happens the other way. So, anyway, more to come on that, but that would be a great project, especially because that 24-inch as it snakes through will hit Corning, which is a 12, and right now, under Corning, west of 50 is only a 4-inch water main. And if we replace that all with a 12-inch main, that'd be the first major leg of our loop throughout the village to connect back to the 24s. That'd be a great project. So we'll continue to work with Amy on that. And then, last meeting, Dr. March, you asked about what will people expect when we, when we turn over the water and we change over? So Melissa Kahun in her office, she's our area manager for the area, she's been heading up a group on communications, and what, how do we help notify residents so that they understand what's going to happen? So next month, I'd like to bring her with me and kind of explain to you how we're going to roll out our communications plan with the water changeover process. And essentially, it'll be three community flyers, colored brochures, explaining about the project timeline, what they can expect, the difference in the water quality. We're planning another open house meeting prior to the water being introduced, so residents can come out and ask questions if they have to. And then, people that live along the route, they'll get a letter, an individualized letter, explaining, like, here's what's going to happen, this is what you can expect, apologize in advance for the inconvenience, things like that. So she'll come next month, that's all right, and kind of explain about that, and we'll actually have some materials we can kind of show you, at least the full first color flyer, so you can see it. Sound good? And then, the last thing is, again, working with Amy and the Robinson folks on the I-57 project to bring the water and sewer across over there. Robinson's putting together some cost estimates for various routes for us, for us to review and take a look at. I think we're still, still waiting on that, that's just been a week or so since we talked to them, so that's, that's making progress as well. With that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Have you worked with Canadian National before?
Yeah.
Putting utilities underneath the tracks?
Yes, we have.
Are they pretty receptive and quick, or are they...
No, no. Not at all.
No, it is quite challenging, quite challenging, but we got time. If we can work through this timeline and work with IDOT, so that we can be assured that the project can take place sometime in a relatively foreseeable future, I think we can work through that.
And that's on our, our agenda for the next meeting to discuss, so.
Let's see what we can do, we'll see if we can work it out. We'd love to be able to cooperate and partner up on this type of thing, but to answer your question, it's extremely challenging. We just did one recently, and it was in regard to the I-57 overpass they built down to Buranay, and even with IDOT, working with us in that, it was extremely challenging to get the permit. It's not insurmountable, but it takes time, a lot of effort, and mostly time. So, any questions?
One of the things that Gene brought up at the last meeting was where the water and sewer's going to come through on the other side of 57, so it meets the needs of our...
And that's, that's what's being, that's what's being currently discussed.
And we'll be able to meet our need on that, where we need it to come through, or where we need it brought to, so we don't hit a void between when projects get approved and where it is, and now there's this big, I don't want to say lapse, but a chunk of money's going to have to be outlaid by somebody to get from the water to the project.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it. I don't know what the, what the dollar amounts are, what the options are today. I do know that our team have been working pretty closely with the guy who owns the land on the south side, because he owns land on both sides of the interstate, I believe, was planning a development at one time, and thought that might be the best route, because one, I think one person really controlled all the easements, and that can be quite a holdup, as we know from our other project. But we're open to looking at that and talking with them, but we'd like to see the cost estimates first, before we get too far into it. And I don't know the choices yet, so engineers are working on that.
Because didn't Gene say that it needed to be as far north?
I thought that's what he said.
Do you remember, Amy?
Well, he wants it to come from the north, to be able to service the hotel and the gas station. It wouldn't do any good to have it at the south side of the road, then somebody would have to pay to extend it...
Right.
...all the way to the hotel.
Right.
That was the issue. It would be a lot better for everybody if it came from the north side.
Any other questions?
Was there any plans to bring water to our new building on Ratchee Road? I don't recall.
I don't even know about that.
No, not at this time, because, you know, that's not annexed into the village, so it's not currently.
Okay.
We didn't even ask that.
That's still being worked on.
But not your problem. Unless she knows somebody.
Anything else for Mr. Blanchett? Great, thank you.
All right.
Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any general discussion? If not, a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole. If not, a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole.
Motion.
Second? Motion by trustee Parker, submitted by trustee Hamm.
Parker?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Morevka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And March?
Yeah.
Committee of the whole is adjourned, we will reconvene at seven o'clock for the regular village board meeting.